At this time, we'll open up the meeting for the Garden Grove City Council. Please call roll if you will, Kathy.
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Broadwater.
Here. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Susan and we'll have Ms. Nguyen, Dina, to do the flag salute.
Dear God, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen. Please turn towards the flag and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had two close session items and we have nothing to report on either one. It's my understanding that we have some presentations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to make these presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is honored to shine the community's spotlight on a dedicated individual who has spent the last 15 years working in community service to reduce youth substance abuse in Garden Grove. Would Lourdes Gutierrez please step forward? Lourdes started working for the service organization CSP or Community Service Programs in 1999 from a satellite office in Garden Grove. She formed the Drug Free Coalition in 2009 with community partners from the Garden Grove Unified School District, the Police Department, Family Resource Centers, and other community organizations. Soon after, the Coalition received a Drug Free Community Support Program grant from the White House Office of National Drug Policy Control and the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. The grant was awarded to help reduce substance abuse among youth in the city and to strengthen collaboration among community organizations and local government. Lourdes also fervently worked for the passage of the city's Social Host Ordinance, attending council meetings, garnering the support of the Police Department, and reaching out to the community. This ordinance prohibits adults from hosting drinking parties for minors. When asked why she is so passionate about drug prevention, she, Lourdes, says, "It is a God-given life-saving mission." When God gives you a mission and you say yes, he brings you community partners to help you do it, and he gives you every grace you need. Lourdes retired on April 1st this year after her 15 years of dedicated service and efforts to reduce substance abuse in this community. She leaves behind a legacy of commitment and concern for our city's kids. The city council extends their deepest appreciation for her passion to bring positive change to Garden Grove and wishes her a long and healthy retirement. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Lourdes with a gift in appreciation and recognition of her extraordinary years of service. Thank you.
We have a gift for you, but I don't know if you're strong enough to carry this. Oh, she did it, she did.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for all your great work.
Thank you so much for your support.
Turn around and get your picture taken.
One, two, three. Over here, please.
Thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words? You may.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm humbled to receive this award, but I accept it on behalf of the Garden Grove Drug Free Coalition, the members who have worked so hard to get this going in Garden Grove. And I would like to thank you most especially, you know, for your efforts and dedication to pass the Social Host Ordinance without any drama at all. So, thank you, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go to oral communications, and we'll do that together with the, with the community, what am I trying to say? Successor agency.
Mayor, I'm sorry, did you want to bring the written communications forward from the Boy Scouts, or did you want to?
I'd like to do that, but I don't know which one's which.
Oh, they have a written communication.
Oh, yes, let's put a written communication first.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we do have a written request from Cub Scout PAC 271 for cosponsorship of their annual Cub Scout Push Cart Derby, and if they'd like to come forward and make the request, if they're prepared to speak.
Permission to address the council?
Permission granted.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Lee Trung. Good evening, Mayor Broadwater and city council member. I'm a little nervous, this is my first time here. So basically, I'm coming on to behalf of Boy Scouts of America, El Capitan District, from PAC 271 of West Garden Grove. Tonight, we're coming to, once again, ask you to co-sponsor, or the city to co-sponsor this event, which is the Cub Scout Push Cart Derby. It's a citywide event which involves the local community and also surrounding cities as well. It's a good opportunity for 120 racers to race down a hill which is located in Garden Grove. The races will take place on Springdale between the 22 Over Path and Lamson. The tentative date upon the city approval will be July 12, 2014 of this year. All right? The timeframe will be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And also, it's a fun event, we're hoping for the approval. It's a great opportunity for these kids to build their own carts with their parents, grandparents, or brothers or sisters, whoever can help them out. It's a good opportunity for them to work as a team and race down the hill. And basically, after the event's over, years afterwards, when these kids drive up that street, they'll remember that precious moment that they got to enjoy this event. At this time, I also have some scouts that would like to address you, so permission for them to approach?
Permission granted.
Hi, my name is Riley Trung, and would you please sponsor this event so my little brother can race down that track the same way I did, having fun and never forgetting that moment?
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Connor Stewart, and I would like the push cart derby so I can build the cart with my dad.
Did you want to talk later?
Hello.
No.
No?
Sebastian?
Hi, my name is Sebastian Chigali, and would you please sponsor us for the push cart event?
My name is Connor Trung.
Nice mouth, my name's Connor Trung.
My name's Connor Trung.
Could you please co-sponsor the event?
Could you please co-sponsor the event for?
So I can race down the hill like my big brother.
To race down the hill just like my big brother.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, the scouts will persuade you guys to approve this request.
Okay, in the Brown Act, that means everybody gets to speak on it if it wants to. So, does anybody here like to speak for it or against it? Mr. Brightigan, your card is here, I was going to get you, so come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. This event is really near and dear to my heart, as I'm currently the district chairman for El Capitan District for Boy Scouts of America. We oversee all the Cub Scout, Boy Scout, Venture crews in the northwestern Orange County area. And I also, in the founder of this event, I started it, what, 13, 13 years ago? With that being said, I really urge your approval of this. This is one of those really positive community events that really lets Garden Grove shine as a community. We, I've been in the Bay Area, San Francisco, and sitting there at a restaurant, and the subject comes up, and the guy sitting next to me says, "I went to that event in Garden Grove." You know, and, you know, everybody associates Calaveras County with that frog jumping contest, and quite frankly, this is, we're the only city in the country that puts on this event. And this is a Garden Grove event, and it's kind of become a synonymous with Garden Grove. So anyway, I really urge your cosponsorship of this event. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I had a comment for.
Well, you'll get your turn. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second that.
Okay, anyone to speak on issue?
I do. Mr. Brightigan, is not true that 13 years ago, you were racing down that hill to test out the track for the safety, to test the safety of it?
The statute of limitations is over, so.
Now, I just want to say, I really support, I was a part of the troop, the pack, back in the day. Such a great event, it's so fun, and it does present lifelong memories for the scouts, and it's just, it's just a family-oriented fun event. And I'll be there.
Can I ask exactly what is our scope of sponsorship? I'm not saying that I'm not supportive of it, of course I am, but just to let the community know exactly, when you say cosponsorship, what is that involved from the city's perspective?
What we're requesting is the closure of the Springdale Street from the 22 Over Path to Lamson, also providing fire and emergency services, and also with the local police department as well, and also with the city disposal. That's basically what we're requesting.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. Call for the vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
Now you can clap. Okay, we'll go to oral communications now. I have a public comment from Beatrice Jones.
I'm Bea Jones, I'm about a 40-year resident of the city of Garden Grove, and I operate San Onge American African flags. And I wanted to bring a historical note to the council as well as to our citizenship, to recognize that tomorrow, the 14th of May, we honor a group of people. Maybe, thank you, okay, that have probably been lost in terms of coming directly to your mind, that is, the women who served the United States Army and the Women's Army Corps. They haven't celebrated their birthday, they no longer exist, but they made a service to make America a greater place. We also want to take a look back, also, in the month of June, to the U.S. colored troops who also, not remembered much in history, served significantly to make America a greater place. With those memories in mind, I want to bring you today to some information that I'm doing in relation to a history project I'm doing in the city of Gard, oh, excuse me, the city of Huntington Beach, unfortunately. But there's a need there. Every second and fourth Saturday, we teach Orange County Learning Black History. And I was teaching a course and was building on what is known as Juneteenth and developed something called a Freedom Tube so as to make it more meaningful to my students. And I said, "Well, this is meaningful to everyone, so I thought I'd share it with you." The Freedom Tube is a 12-inch clear plastic protective tube with a black wood base, the flag sits inside of it, and has a blue stand, and it has mounted on it the Juneteenth flag, which I've shown you before, but it looks similar to this. And, except for that it's a nylon flag and not a piece of paper. And it shows the five-pointed star of Texas, and it shows how it comes through Anova, over the horizon, and over all of the red, which reflects the many lives that were lost during the Civil War. And printed on that flag is the date, June 19, 1865, so everyone will know when to celebrate. This is my addition to the original flag to make it more relevant to my students. And we include the four-page pamphlet that tells the history of the celebration of the day, and it tells the flag symbolism. It also includes, as always, our red, black, and green flag, the universal African flag in the form of a sticker, which would also be in that tube. And I marked the tube sale for 10 bucks. It's going to be available since the city of Garden Grove is hosting the Orange County Juneteenth event. Did you know that, Mr. Mayor?
I did know that.
I didn't know it until recently. So anyhow, the NAACP normally sponsors Juneteenth for Orange County, and it's going to be in my city, so I had to come here today and make sure that y'all knew. And you will be able to get that flag and the tube at that time. It's a product that's designed to tell about Juneteenth, which is a California state holiday, and it's an American product for all Americans because it's a history we need to know, and it's an opportunity to learn of what Jubilee was, what freedom was, and what the end of the Civil War was, and the end of slavery. This is a vital piece of our American history that's really been hidden too long. And we need to expose the truth, reveal the joy, and embrace our fellow man, and buy that Freedom Tube now. Thank you.
Why don't you tell them why, what Juneteenth really means, where it come from?
Okay, Juneteenth goes back, like I said, to 1865, and it was the date that Africans enslaved in Texas received the information that the Emancipation Proclamation had been signed and that they were free. However, those people in Texas had worked an additional two and a half years in slavery, not knowing that the Emancipation Proclamation had been passed. So it was indeed a day of Jubilee, and it started in Texas, and actually, the state is the only state in the United States that has a national holiday, Juneteenth, and they've been celebrating it since 1970 in Texas. So it's an opportunity to draw on the past, because our curriculums in our schools have eliminated most of the information dealing with our own Civil War, which is sad. And it's amazing, children as well as adults don't basically know our very important history, and particularly military history, and who were those people that played the roles and so forth. But that's the basic history, comes from that date, and when General Granger came in and said, "Here's the piece of paper Mr. Lincoln said, 'You are free.'" And they threw those hoes down, and they had celebrations. They went to find what freedom was, and there was no plan, that's a whole nother story.
Just going to have a question if I may.
Yes, sir.
Please tell us when your event, or the event that the NCDW.
Thank you very much. That is on the 24th of next month, no, this month.
24th of next month.
Is it the next month? Okay, I guess I just found out about the date, because I'm not an active member of that organization. But they told me. So, the 24th, and it'll be at the Elks, so it's right here in Garden Grove.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Craig Durfee.
All of there and council and staff, I have some recommendations for consideration. The first recommendation is to form a, to the CHP press release, the schools in collaboration calling SAD, what SAD is, is Students Against Destructive Decisions, local high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools making good decisions. I would recommend that we come up with a resolution as lead agency with the Police Department and Community Development to, and tie into your master plan of your bicycle program that you're going to be developing here to encourage the safety of the community. I encourage the city to join bicycle clubs with the city of schools to bring about grant recognition opportunities. I have formed three Facebooks. One is Safe Route to School, Craig A. Durfee. The second one, California Destructive Driving Awareness, I had 415 hits from law enforcement, I assume they are, and one day, the first day posted. And the third one is Garden Grove Bicycle Pedestrian Forum to advertise and promote the interest. And I would encourage the consideration of staff and the council to start bannering up on Chapman and Burke's Valley View, maybe create a Facebook page as a form of documentation for your grant. That way, you can have some merit of recognition in the scoring process. I would also ask for the consideration, I was talking to some staff here, about having a ordinance for bicycle lights sold in Garden Grove that require to be operational to the vehicle code before sale with a three-foot rule. I think that is important, we started recognizing this is not a recreational activity, it's now a part of OCT efforts to work with the schools and have Safe Route to School and have advisory committees of the different cities. But the visibility is key to dark clothing. I had a personal inmate mayor in Chapman by the Humane Society, and I could not see him, sir. I could barely see his shadow with the lights, just enough light, I stared at it. So, I think dark clothing is not a positive thing, and then with the safety event we had here, I would ask the council to reach out to staff and the medical facilities that are offering backpacks with no reflection on them, as I say, they were backpacks, I'd ask for them to be changed, that they are visible. That is, for law enforcement, it's going to have a hard time in all of Orange County and the state with this three-foot rule. It's a lot of confusion, I anticipate a lot of calls, I think we can get a step ahead of it by educating and working with the schools, and the city can, for the school president, George, they would be willing to work with you, maybe have a parameters of resolution in those areas. And you have, like Irvine and, let's see, Santa Ana have a joint relationship with facilities and resources, I think that building the relationship with that, it's going to strengthen your master plan for the safety of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durfee. John Wildsmith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and citizens of Garden Grove. I'm John Wildsmith, I have a traffic congestion suggestion. On my way home from work a couple of weeks ago, I needed to stop by the post office and Bank of America on Chapman. After leaving the post office, I went west on Stanford, intending to go north on Brookhurst. Unfortunately, Brookhurst was down to one lane, and it was a parking lot, so I decided I would go continue along Stanford to Gilbert. Unfortunately, when the light turned green, the intersection was completely blocked, so I had to wait, when it turned red, the second time it turned green, it was still blocked. It was the third time, I was able to continue along Stanford. When I got to Gilbert, that was a parking lot as well, there's a flagman at Gilbert and Lamson apparently, so I decided I would go south on Gilbert to the Boulevard, go west on the Boulevard, down Magnolia, and back all the way along to Bank of America. Unfortunately, the Boulevard was down to one lane. It took me about 45 minutes to get a normally six or seven-minute journey, about 45 minutes. The problem, I think, is lack of coordination when it comes to doing roadwork. And my suggestion would be, for any other roadwork projects, would be to maybe have somebody from the city, Public Works, and maybe a traffic officer from the PD to get their heads together and see how it might possibly affect. You know, I think there's a lot of businesses are really affected by some of these road closures as well. One that comes to mind is Patty Widdecombe, of course, has complained about her business being down about 40% because of cones, cone zones, where nobody's doing any work. So that's a second suggestion, is, you know, only have the cones there when we're really doing the work. Sometimes the cones are there at weekends and nobody's touching anything there. Another suggestion is, where possible, to indent, what do you call them now, bus bays. A prime example of this would be right at this minute, just by Nichols Ranch, we're doing some work on the, cut down some trees, some bushes there, and I think they produced a sidewalk, and I think this would have been a great opportunity to put a bus bay there rather than hold up the traffic on Garden Grove Boulevard going west. So, just a few suggestions.
So just a few suggestions, and I hope they'll be considered, and maybe we can speed up the traffic a little bit in Garden Grove. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Joshua Kramer.
Good evening, citizens of Garden Grove. I recently read about a Supreme Court decision that allows for people to read or recite prayers for religious purposes. So I thought I'd take this time to exercise my freedom of religion and read a prayer. So if you'd like to bow your heads with me. "Our pasta, who art in calender, draining be your noodles; thy noodle come, thy sauce be yum; on top some grated Parmesan; give us this day our garlic bread, and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trample on our lawns; and lead us not into vegetarianism, but deliver us some pizza, for thine is the meatball, the noodle, and the sauce; forever and ever, ramen." That is, that is all. Thank you.
My name is Joel Block. I'm here to introduce myself. I'm a candidate for the 72nd Assembly District, which includes Garden Grove, as most of you know, most of Garden Grove, from the west border to Harbor. I also wanted to remind everybody, especially the audience, that there is an election coming up on June 3rd. For those people who are listening, who have not yet registered, or who need to re-register because they moved, I believe May 19 is the last date to do so. I've been to Garden Grove many times before, and I wanted to tell you how much I look forward to the upcoming Strawberry Festival. I had the good fortune two years ago to walk the festival with my friend and Congressman Alan Loenthal, and plan to do so again. I have a lengthy background in public service. I've represented everybody from public employees such as police and fire, to federal workers, to state employees at the university level. I've also represented as an attorney Cal State University in statewide collective bargaining. So I'm very familiar with a lot of the state issues that come up before the legislature. So I want to thank you again for your kindness, and please, everybody, don't forget to vote.
All right. I'm here on, talking about the amendment number 8006-2014, about the removal of the signage over a certain distance, 450 feet, I think. But I'm here, I'm part of my father, who owns the business on 12141 Garden Grove Boulevard. He perched this to about five years ago, six years ago, sorry, I'm really nervous. But I'm here to just kind of, I guess, plead our case, right? Because this sign means a lot to us. First of all, it gives us a lot of visibility for our business, which we struggle already. But the sign itself catches people's eyes, and it allows them to see our business from a distance away, right? And yeah, it does give us an advantage, but it was kind of like the attraction that led us, my father and my mother, to buy the business about six years ago. Also, I know that the signage pertains to any sign after this ordinance, but I wasn't so sure about existing signage. Because this sign was built, I believe, in the 1960s, and to my knowledge, it is grandfathered in. So I wanted to see if we could keep the sign and continue our business and to attract clients from the safe word. So that is all.
Thank you very much. Lauren Smith.
Thanks for listening to my comments. I'm a longtime resident in Garden Grove all my life, and I was recently, I saw that there's a pet store that's on Valley View in the city of Garden Grove, and I would just like to urge us to get an ordinance to follow suit with all the other cities, well, not every city, but Dana Point, Newport Beach, Laguna Beach, Huntington Beach, in getting an ordinance to ban the pet store because the puppies are coming from, animals coming from puppy mills. They're in horrible, deplorable conditions. There are so many animals already existing within our shelters that are without homes and get euthanized. It costs us taxpayers tons of money to facilitate the euthanasia, the dogs and cats running around in the streets. So my recommendation is that we step up to the plate, do the socially responsible thing, follow suit as the other cities are doing, and take the animals out of this hor, you know, they're really, I don't know if you've seen any of the Oprah specials that show how, what the conditions are that these animals have to exist in. And it's, it's really, it's cruel and inhumane. And there's not enough homes as there are for all the animals, and it would be a tax savings for all of us. And I just feel strongly that we should, we should do the right thing. There's 58 cities throughout the United States that are already doing this. So anyways, I'm so nervous, I wasn't planning on speaking, but thank you for listening to my comments, and let's set the example and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Dori Van Wurdenberg.
My name is Dori Van Wurdenberg, and coming July, it will be 40 years since we moved to Garden Grove. And we've been very happy. Our first house we bought, we never moved. And I hope you're all animal lovers, because just like Dori, I'm very concerned about the welfare of the animals. I'm a member of the Orange County SPCA, and SPCA is, as you probably know, Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. And to get all those puppy mills, puppies, sent to Garden Grove is the most cruel thing you can imagine. It's not the deplorable conditions where the puppies are raised in Missouri and Arkansas, but they get loaded into big trucks. I don't know if they even stop to let the puppies out, and then they're being delivered here in Garden Grove. To be put in a little cage in the store with a glass panel so you can't touch them, and they sit there until somebody will buy them. If you have a six week old puppy, and they sit in the store for three months before somebody buys them, or they finally, I don't know what they do with them, but they have to get rid of them eventually because they grow up and get bigger. And what's the point in having all those puppies being brought to California when there are hundreds of animals in the shelter, in the city? There are numerous rescue organizations where they can get a dog. And it's just cruel. And as a member of the SPCA, I feel obligated to say something about it and urge you to put a ban on the sale of live animals in the pet stores. Sometimes they have like an adoption day where rescue people can come with their dogs, and they organize that. That's fine. But just the sale for animals is just really cruel. And like Dori mentioned, I just hope that you will follow the footsteps of Huntington Beach, Irvine, Dana Point, Laguna, and Lisha Viejo to ban the sale of live puppies. There is nobody who has to do without a dog. It's just the welfare of the animal is so much more important than the profit they can make in the pet store. That's all I have to say. I hope you'll think about it. And if you want to see what a puppy mill puppy looks like, go online. Type in puppy mill, and you will get sick, I promise you. When you see what those dogs look like, it makes your stomach turn. And if we can prevent any little bit of help in helping those animals by banning the sale of live puppies, then if you have a dog, they will be forever grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I making a mess with that name?
Bernstein.
Tell us your name.
Bernstein.
Bernstein. I'm going to show you what you wrote on this card.
Oh, someone else wrote it. Thank you. Hello, my name is Lori Bernstein, and I agree with everything the last two people mentioned. Thousands of animals are dying in the shelters. All the pets sold at pet stores come from puppy mills. That's a well-known fact.
Let me ask you a question. Where do all the puppies come that people buy? And if they don't buy them at a store?
Where do they come from? They're coming from puppy mills, the ones that are sold at the stores.
Well, where would you buy it if you didn't buy it at a store?
Well, they can go to the shelter and adopt an animal, or they can buy from rescue groups. There's specific breed rescue groups. If you want a purebred, you can go to any rescue group that, that has the breed that you're interested in and adopt from the rescue group. And there are some breeders who, you know, breed animals. They're good people, they are not puppy mills, so the puppy mills are an awful place. And if you're asking me these questions, sir, I bet you don't know what a puppy mill is. Because if you did, you would know that these, these places are most horrific places for animals to live in. And I want to tell you, what I wrote is, it's well documented that animals and puppy mills suffer tremendously. The mothers of the cute little puppies in the windows of these puppy stores have a miserable life. They're bred over and over and over again until they can't produce. And once they can't produce, they're killed. They're useless. They're good for nothing because they breed them for years and years. They live in little cages. I mean, please check out puppy mills. Don't take our word for it. Check out what puppy mills are, and there are thousands of them. And, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Nobody has ever died at that podium.
I'm sorry. We spend our tax dollars killing animals in the shelters while the pet shops keep selling animals from puppy mills. That's what I'm asking you to, please consider an ordinance to ban the sale of puppies and animals at the pet shops. Like I said, they can always be following what the other cities have done. They get animals from rescue groups, and they sell them. They still can make money. They can get animals from the shelters. There are plenty of purebred, or, you know, thousands of wonderful animals who've lost their homes that can be sold at the pet store. But they're animals that are being euthanized because the stores are bringing in all these puppy, puppy mill dogs. So I would appreciate if you consider that. Thank you.
Evelyn Neunewarten. Hello, my name is Evelyn Neunewarten, and I guess everybody has said everything already. I just want to add that I really want you to consider to ban dogs, cats, and other animals from pet shops. I did volunteer work at the Orange County Shelter many years ago. They had the decompression chamber, and they put too many animals in there. Well, we abolished the decompression chamber, but the animals still came in. And as of now, it hasn't stopped. They're still killing too many. So, and they will kill more animals unless we stop the pet shops selling dogs and cats. And that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hoa Buaytu.
Hi, my name is Hoa Buaytu. I have a business on 12341 Harbor Boulevard, and I'm concerned about the sign that the city is going to take it down and put a small sign. And then I concern about the graffiti. If people graffiti in my shop, and the city will send me a letter to take it out. If not, they will find me. So I just concerned about the sign. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Brenda Cavaleo, and I'm here to stress the counsel on a national problem that has landed right at your doorstep, the sale of dogs, animals, and pet stores and retailers. And it's obvious, I mean, I didn't know what a puppy mill was years ago. I didn't know what a puppy mill was. A puppy mill is a factory where dogs are bred over and over again. It was started back in the 1930s, back when farmers wanted to make a fast income. So they took chicken coops, and they stuffed dogs in these chicken coops. Well, that practice of chicken coops has carried into 2014, and there are millions of dogs suffering across the United States. I'm not sure if you realize the statistics, but in the United States, 5 million animals are killed every year. One out of four dogs that enters the Orange County Shelter are killed. Three out of four cats are killed at the shelter. What does that say about our city? We should be compassionate. We should be kind. We should be fiscally responsible, not passing or introducing an ordinance that would not only save people, because a lot of these animals, they're sick because they're inbred. They're raising puppy mills in these deplorable conditions. And these pet stores, I have photographs that I can send to each and every one of you showing the shipment of puppies that come in semi-trailers thousands of miles away, and they're sold and brokered through the Hunt Corporation, H-U-N-T-E, Hunt Corporation. I have these facts because the pet store that has come to Garden Grove moved out of Huntington Beach after the path to ban. Not only were they offered a viable business solution to transition to a humane business model- model, they refused to do it. They refused to do it. Morally, ethically, it's wrong and we need to pass an ordinance because some folks, you can't just count on them to do the right thing. You have to pass laws. It's a very sad fact, you have to pass laws. And if we're going to be teaching our children ethics and morals, they should know that putting a dog in a glass cage to be viewed as merchandise is just plain wrong. Let's go ahead and introduce and pass an ordinance that makes physical sense, moral sense, ethical sense for the city of Garden Grove.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. Half a century ago, a man came to Orange County looking for a property. He looked at Garden Grove and he looked at Anaheim. And he was looking for a place to build an amusement park. Well, he decided that because of the five freeway, which would offer better access to people living in Los Angeles, that Anaheim was the right place to build his Disneyland. Well, a lot of people have never gotten over the fact that he didn't do it in Garden Grove. But that's just the way things work out. Now we have a sign ordinance being proposed to change all the signs on Harbor Boulevard so that we will look like Anaheim. We are Garden Grove. We have our own character. Yeah? Disneyland has Mickey Mouse. Orange has the orange symbol. We have the strawberry, okay? We have our own identity. Let's look at ways that we can work with that instead of doing everything we can to become a clone of Disney Anaheim. Now, I know that a lot of these signs are very attractive. They're very nice. If you have a building with a large sign on it already, like the hotels, people don't notice the small sign on the street. But for the small businesses on Harbor Boulevard, that small sign is going to be obscured. If you're in the two left lanes of Harbor Boulevard and there's a car in the right lane, you will not see these new signs because they'll be obscured by traffic in that right lane. So these businesses are going to lose the prospective customers that will be looking for something that will tell them there's a place to get food, there's a place for any number of different services. But if they can't see the sign, they won't know where to stop. So I'm urging the council to reconsider changing the signs on Harbor Boulevard. Maybe there's some kind of accommodation that could be made. Maybe some of these signs could be mounted on the buildings rather than going with these monument signs that are going to be so hard to see. And maybe we can help the businesses by working with them rather than trying to become a part of Anaheim. And all I can say is, this water park deal that's tied in with the whole idea of Anaheim and the hotels and all of that, $45 million in bonds, 42 million of it going to the developer. Who is going to own that hotel and water park once it's built? Is the city going to own it or is it going to be owned by the developer? Theoretically, we're going to get about $8 million a year in bed tax and other property taxes from it. I don't know if it's going to be that successful, but I have serious doubts about the city being put in the hole for that much money. I wish I had enough money that I could go out and just give it to somebody to build something and they can keep it and maybe they'll pay me back a little bit. But I'd like to know how the city's going to recoup that money. Now, with all the envy for Disneyland, maybe the council is underdressed. Maybe you should all be wearing rabbit ears or Mickey Mouse ears, sorry.
Disneyland was open in 1955. The city of Garden Grove didn't become a city until 1956, so I don't think his story will stand up.
Good evening. Mayor Broadwater, council members, I too urge you to look into a ban on the sale of live animals. I'm on the opposite side. I see the end result of these puppy mill dogs. They're neglected. They're taken away from their mothers much too young, at five to six weeks of age, by brokers. They are trucked here to Garden Grove and just this morning, this particular pet store received another semi-load full of puppies from Missouri. Where are these dogs going to end up? In our overcrowded shelters? When the puppies get too big or they're too rough with the children? We need to look at an alternate solution and the solution of best friends in Los Angeles who have rescue dogs for adoption. We don't need to be selling more live animals here. Our shelter is overcrowded at best. There was an article in the Daily Breeze that taxes will need to be raised in order to help the shelter because they're understaffed. Once upon a time, we had a dream of putting a larger shelter out at the Marine Base at El Toro that was shut down. Whatever happened to that plan? I mean, I'm not against the shelters, but I'm against euthanizing young, healthy dogs so someone who owns a pet store can truck in puppy mill dogs and make money off the backs of poor, innocent souls. This is one subject we really need to look long and hard at and show everybody that Garden Grove is just as compassionate as Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach, Irvine, Elisa Viejo. Obviously, we need to try. We may not succeed, but we at least have to try. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Broadwater and members of the City Council. You saw me here last month when you were considering the adoption of the sign ordinance. I'm here to speak on behalf of Injrielty. I'm their attorney. I'm here to make one last request since tonight's the night for adopting, to pull that and to consider the comments made tonight from the various residents who have concerns. Consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to this City Council to carve out those old signs that have historical significance or those that have allowed a small business to have the significant visibility they've enjoyed over the years on the basis of that The ordinance really appears to be coming out of this development agreement with the Great Wolf Water Park. There is a provision, as you may be aware, and I'm sure the staff is aware, where the city is to undertake certain improvements along Harbor. This is coming out of that, it appears to me. So for the sake of accommodating this large entity, these small businesses are certainly collateral damage. They don't have the recognition of the Mariots of the world or the global corporations. They're small businesses that have, you know, been in this city for many, many years and their sole beacons to the world are their signs. These monument signs that this sign ordinance is going to replace these with, a low to the ground, they're not half as visible. Visibility will be significantly impaired. They also, as one of the commenters noticed, they become attractive nuisances for graffiti. And as we know, those costs for remediating graffiti are not borne by the city, they're passed on to the property owners. So these are practical considerations. I also have legal ones. I have a letter and I want to reference it that I submitted to you. I believe it's in your packet, dated May 9th, 2014. I want to incorporate that letter by reference. Among other things, there's a SEQA exemption that is proposed for this ordinance. It's important to note that SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, does seek to have lead agencies consider the impacts on historical resources. And a categorical exemption, quote, "shall not be used for a project which may cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a historical resource." You can't invoke an exemption if there's a potential for an impact to a historical resource. There was, I think, a comment made that none of these signs are listed, but it's also a matter of law that a sign does not have to be listed to be considered a historical resource for the purposes of SEQA. So on the SEQA front, that needs to be reconsidered. Also, Business and Professions Code, Section 5499, is the state statute governing these kinds of ordinances. And it does have a prohibition on removal of freestanding signs where the visibility of the business will be significantly impaired. My letter, I won't go through it now, analyzes why this ordinance runs afoul of that section. So that's just to the points. I've got others I want to... I also just encourage you to take a look. It's very easy for the City Council to pull this off the agenda tonight. It's item number 10A. Take it off and send it back to staff just to consider crafting a simple exception that would grandfather older signs of historical significance on a showing of significance and those signs upon which small businesses rely for their livelihood, these signs. And I just want to submit that to you on this final night where this is slated to be adopted. If you have questions, we're on hand.
Any comments from the council?
I do have a comment. I don't know if it's the appropriate time, but I am sympathetic to the issue that came up, the concerns about the puppy mill. To confess ignorance, I'm not very familiar with it, but you've raised my concern. I've seen, I think I know the location where you're talking about where they were delivered. I think it's worthwhile for us to look into it. I'll admit freely that I'm an animal lover. I have a rescue dog at home and I like to tell people. Well, I like to think of it more as my dog rescued me. I have a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful family and the dog and our cat is a part of that family. So if there is some issue like that outstanding, I need to be more educated about it and I'm willing to look into it. So I want to present to the council to do that.
I'll jump in on that too. And I would concur and just say, we've been seeing this come across our radar on social media and stuff recently and I'm not super familiar with it either, but if the mayor would oblige, just sort of ask staff to do a preliminary bit of research on this and take inventory of what pet shops do we have in town, how do they operate?
I only know of one and only because of what he told me. You know, it's really, I mean, certainly something we can look at. I don't have any problem with that. You don't have any, it is over with. Oral communications is tough enough without having it twice. So we can look at it and see what's in it, you know? So if I'm smiling, it's because of what something he said. But anyway, we'll take a look at it. And when you come up to a city council where you're not really familiar or anything else and you want something like this, you should bring the resolution from the other cities with you because then we'd have something to look at and see what you're talking about.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do any of the ladies know if they have that ordinance in Newport Beach?
Okay, we're not going to have a discussion between you.
I saw one of the pet shops at the Fashion Island.
We're going to take five minutes. We're back in five minutes. The City Council, and we missed somebody. We missed Susan Callahan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My family has been present at all of the sign ordinance meetings, both at the Planning Commission and in front of you. So I won't spend too much time on what has been presented to you last week. I'll just briefly tell you that obviously our businesses, we've been in business as long as Disneyland and we've been in our current location since 1965 with our signs. And our signs are imperative to the operation of our business. We get people that see our sign that come in daily to rent our property and we get people that have seen our sign five, six, seven, 20 years ago that recall when they need to rent a property, they come to our business. This is not something we take lightly. This is something that is truly, we will lose business if we do not have our signage as such. Also, obviously, the thing that we've talked about before is the historical significance. Because people have seen our sign for so long and have come to recognize it, it is our brand and it is what is important to us. And this is our brand and our image that we have out there so that people know where to find us. And the historical significance, as the attorney that represents us pointed out, is we don't have to have asked for it to be registered. Everybody in the city of Garden Grove knows it. We've been here in that location again for 49 years and simply being there with our eye and the big eye in the sky and our large billboard sign is of historical significance to the city. But I did want to bring up some new points that we had not discussed before. I was very concerned, I think it was Councilman Beard last time, who said, "Well, there's only two people here about the sign ordinance and this affects over 60 businesses." So, you know, kind of, I guess people don't care. Based on that comment, I reached out to a handful of people in the community to ask them why they weren't there. Well, let me tell you, nobody knows this is going on. Nobody has any idea. When I've asked them about it, they said, "What? How could they do that? How could they take down my sign?" Of course it would be grandfathered. I need my sign. It's important to my business. How can they do that? I said, "You need to let people know that this is a problem for you because in a lot of cases, these are tenants and you contacted the landlord and the landlord may or may not..." In every case I spoke to, the landlord did not contact the tenant. So the tenants don't know. The frustrating thing is that to one, make the judgment that only two people are here, they're the only ones that are going to care. I can see that that was true, that only two people were here last time, but it's because people don't know about it and they don't know quite what to do about it either. But it's frustrating that I know that the city, if somebody puts up a banner or something that the city believes is not in compliance with their existing ordinance, that the city contacts those tenants directly. They don't contact the landlord or they may copy the landlord, but they work directly with the tenant to tell them that they need to take their banner or whatever down because it's not in compliance. So the city knows that these tenants care about their advertising and their signage. Yet when this issue comes up, they don't contact the tenants, they contact the landlords. And in some cases, the landlord is out of state or, you know, this or that, and they maybe don't have the best communication with their tenants. So just because two people were there last time, and as a matter of fact, a couple of the people I talked to said they wanted to come to tell their story. The woman that spoke is from the donut shop that has a large sign. The gentleman in the back, he and his father are from the hair salon. They wanted to come and say, yes, they wanted you to know this was important. So I... They wanted to come and say, yes, they wanted you to know this was important, so I gave them the information. Beyond that, I just had a few questions for you, and I wanted to pose them to you. First, does the city have the funds to provide compensation to each property owner with a parcel listed in this ordinance? Next, how many signs in the city currently funded are you planning to remove? Or how many signs in the city do you have funding to remove currently? And then finally, how would the city make its determinations as to which signs are changed first? We want to understand your process in going forward if you choose to do so. However, of course, as our attorney suggested, we actually hope that you will consider the Planning Commission's recommendation, take it off the agenda tonight, and put further work into this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we will close oral communications, and we will go to successor, we'll recess the council and go to the successor agency.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll call the May 13th meeting of the Garden Grove Successor Agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fong?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications in conjunction with City Council. Move on to consent items, basically just receive and file the minutes from last time.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Any matters from agency members?
No.
We'll adjourn back to council.
Okay, at this time, we will reconvene the council, and we'll go to... We'll go to, what am I trying to, consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that Items 6A through 6M be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member.
Mayor, I'd like to pull 6H.
6H.
Yeah, so I'm going to recuse myself from 6H because I have a business relationship with one of the parties involved in it.
Entertain, entertain the balance.
I'd like to also pull Mayor 6C and 6L, please.
I move the balance. A second, I'm moving the balance.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 6C. Mr. Pham?
Yes, Mayor, my question was, are we not required to make this a bidding process? Because it is a renewal, I just want to understand why it wasn't put out to bid. And also, I think the numbers may have been different. I saw in the summation, it was 36,000, and then, in parentheses, our agenda was not to exceed 65,000. Does anyone want to clarify the, first clarify the amount that we're talking about, and then why it was not put out to bid?
I'm not familiar as far as if this specific request went out to bid or not, or if the public has out of the country last week. In the staff report, as you pointed out, I think it says not to exceed 60, 36,000 dollars, it's a 32,000 dollars. So, I'd have to check the clerk's office as to, is that just a typo?
Mr. Fratell, if we pull that one off of calendar, is it important, is what I want to know?
Come back and...
You can come back in the next meeting.
Yeah, we can come back and clarify the bidding issue. Looks like the 65,000 dollars was a typo, so it is 36,000 in the staff report.
Thank you.
But as far as, since it's a renewal, I don't know if that changed the bidding requirements.
All right.
Okay, 6H. Who pulled that?
I pulled it just to recuse myself.
Okay, recuse yourself. Entertain a motion?
6H.
You got a motion to move it?
Second.
Got a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Who pulled 61?
6L. Mayor, just want to call for the record that I'm on the Horizon Cultural Board, and that's warrant number 565185. I have no financial interest in the decision, so I would not need to recuse myself. I want to put on the record that I am on the board of directors for that organization.
Make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
Second.
Second, motion and second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we have no matters from the Commission's committees. Items for consideration, none. Ordinance is presented for second reading, Amendment 10A. Let's go with 10A.
Mr. Mayor, 10A is ordinance for second reading, that's ordinance number 2837, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving amendment number A-006-2014, establishing overlays, design standards for signs generally within the international web, mixed-use area, and providing for replacement of non-conforming signs.
Any comment for that, any questions? Entertain a motion?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, let's go to 10B.
Mr. Mayor, 10B is second reading for ordinance number 2838, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving amendment to the development agreement between Cynthia Circle Apartments LLC, successor in interest to Cynthia Circle Development LP, and the City of Garden Grove extending the term of the development agreement for additional four years to December 13th, 2017, for property located at the end of Cynthia Circle cul-de-sac on the east side of Euclid Street, north of Westminster Avenue at 11031 Cynthia Circle, parcel number 100-391-22.
Any questions for staff? Here and now, entertain a motion.
Move to approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. Beard.
Yeah, the open house, or the Public Safety Day on Saturday, it was a great event. And the words of somebody I heard, it was awesome. A little awesome sauce on it. It was just totally entertaining and enjoyable, the exhibits and all the equipment that we have. And I want to commend and thank the police and fire departments for putting it on. It was well done, and well received, too, well attended. And I have, oh, Strawberry Festival is coming up. I encourage everybody to participate, go, keep cutting on Friday night, Saturday the parade, and then the whole events that go with it. So, I hope to see everybody out there. And one other last comment on that would be the Strawberry Festival 5K run, that morning of Saturday, May 24th, at 8:00 a.m. on historic Main Street. Hope to see a lot of people there. I know I see Councilman Fong there, and other council members, mayor suited up, ready to run.
Passing out water?
Yeah. Okay, that's it, thanks.
Okay, Dina.
Yes, first, I want to congratulate all the people who had worked on the water park project. Finally, this has come into realization, and we're going to have groundbreaking on May 21st, is that correct? Hope to see a lot of people out there. Also, I want to wish all the mothers, happy Mother's Day that they had last weekend, and hopefully, they had, everything they had hoped for had come true. And if any of the mothers out there ever need help, we have a helpline for you and your family. That helpline is 211. It's for battered women, it's for people who are depressed, and also for people who are looking for shelter. That helpline can direct you to the places you need to find help. Thirdly, I'd like to remind everyone to come out and get free cake on the last Friday of May for the Strawberry Festival. And I have never, ever been disappointed with the free strawberry cake. And also, the line goes really fast, too, so if you see a very long line, don't worry about it, because you will get to the front of the line probably in about 60 seconds, because we have about 20, 30 people passing out cakes. Also, don't forget to buy in Garden Grove. And lastly, we have Memorial Day coming up. I'd like to remind everyone to pray for our soldiers overseas, and remember those who have served our country, and also to come out for our police memorial on the last Thursday of this month. Thank you.
And just to add on to what Councilwoman Nguyen said, it's going to be this Thursday, right, at 5:00 p.m.?
Oh, thank you, thank you for correcting that. This Thursday, yes.
Yes, this will be this Thursday, 5:00 p.m. over at the police memorial there. Also, looking forward to the 5K run, Chris?
Yeah.
Bring your running shoes, everybody. And then, next meeting on the 27th, I will unfortunately not be here. I was invited to be attending the graduation over in West Point for one of my dear friend's sons, so I apologize for not being here. The last time I missed a meeting, that was for my honeymoon, so I hope this is equally as forgivable from the city's perspective. So, thank you.
Just one, it wasn't mentioned, is the annual Community Foundation and Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament tomorrow. We're excited about it, we're nervous about the weather, going to be very hot and dry, so we're actually going to bring a lot of extra water and spray bottles and try and keep everybody cool.
I'd like to mention the Public Works also, the open house of the Public, I mean, for the Public Works, for the police department and the fire department. And it was pretty neat watching them cut into a car and seeing how they would cut somebody right out of it. Took them only about four or five minutes, boy, and zapped that guy out of it. I thought it was really good, I thought they, both the police department and the fire department did a great job, and it was really good. And I had my grandson with me, we had a good time, and he got his fire engine painted on his face, we haven't forgot that yet, so... Okay, I'd like to also, we have a Shakespeare Festival-type thing in Garden Grove, we've had it for years, and Tom, what's Tom's last name? Braddock. Tom Braddock was the leader of the band for that Shakespeare Festival, although he didn't have a real band. But he was the leader for it for a number of years, and he's turned it over to another fellow, a fellow that's involved in movies and plays and television, and all kinds of things. And his name is John Walcutt. And I heard him talk, he was trying to get some money out of the foundation, which we did give him, as a matter of fact. And it was, he really is enlightening, I mean, he is just full of stuff. I mean, this guy is pumped up. And so, he had his first show that he put out last Saturday night, and I'm not a person that likes stage, I like movie houses much better where they control the temperature. But I did go to it, and I'll have to admit, it was good, it was great. He had this introduction of himself and what he can do, and they actually did a radio play on the stage. It's hard to explain that, but it worked well, it was good. And he said he would have 11 stars there, and he actually put their pictures in a bulletin that he was passing out all over. And I looked at it myself, and yeah, he'd be lucky if he gets half of them there. And all 11 of them were there. I mean, he pulled it off, and it was really good, I really thought it was good. We are going to, do we have anything else? No, we do not. And we will adjourn until May 27th at 5:30 p.m.